Call this budget meeting to order, please. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
We're up for Development Services.
And we're actually gonna go out of order a little bit. We do have a couple people outside of our organization here to present on the transportation system. And so we're gonna give them the opportunity to present first. That presentation's gonna be spearheaded, spearhead, I should say, by Lisa Cortinas, the Director of Transportation Services. And so if you wouldn't mind, Lisa, coming on up and running through your presentation. As a refresher to council, the reason why we're discussing this is because the city helps fund the system. And so this is a good educational opportunity for everybody on how the funding works and just in general how the system is doing. Lisa?
Well, thank you and good afternoon. I appreciate the invite to attend the budget work session. And like Jesus said, I'm hoping by the end of my presentation, you'll know a little bit more about how your transportation is funded. Okay, we're gonna talk about the federal and state funds that are available for our city. We're going to compare some of our statistics against other public transportations across the state of Texas. We're gonna look at sources of revenues that we currently have for our system. We're gonna, lastly, we're gonna look at our 2020 budget request and the services that we currently offer. Okay, this first slide talks about the funding on the federal side and how we receive it. As you know, our federal funds are not available until they're apportioned. And usually, as the federal government gets later and later, we usually don't see our first funding until like March, April. We begin services September 1, but we don't actually receive any federal dollars till March or April. The funds on the federal side are portioned just based on two criteria. One is population and population density. There is a requirement for matching funds. If you fund a capital project, it's 80% that, the federal share, and 20% has to come from local. On the operating side, 50% of the net operating costs are funded on the federal side and the rest has to come from local. I also noted that our fare box is taken off the top off of the grossed operating expenses. And that doesn't get applied, the 50% doesn't get applied, until after those fares are deducted. On the state side, it's a little different. They still use the criteria, population, population density, but they also put in a performance factor. Half of the funds are based on, I'm sorry, 30% of funds are based on operating expenses, your ridership per capita, ridership per revenue mile, and revenue miles per operating expense. So the better you perform on the, as far as the state is concerned, the more funds that could come to your city. Okay, on the state side, the Department of Transportation, that's who funnels the money to us. And it's appropriated on the, by the legislature on a two-year biennium. I put a slide and compared us against other small cities comparison to our size. And as you can see, our passenger trips, based on our population, far exceed several of the cities that I have in here as a comparison. Okay, this next slide talks about how our service is efficient and how it compares against other systems. So when we're comparing, we look at operating expense per vehicle revenue mile. And a vehicle revenue mile is actually those miles that you're in revenue service. That's when you start your service. And as you can see, it's costing us per hour about $51.58 compared to other small cities. As you can see, the costs are quite high. When you compare us as far as operating per vehicle revenue mile per mile, our costs are low as well. And just a footnote at the bottom, just so you can see, we, we provide about 90 hours of service a week. So that's our Monday through Friday, 7 to 6 service. Our Saturday service, we operate from 11:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. Okay, then the next slide talks about how cost-effective our system is by comparison to other small cities. And you can see, based on our population, we provide more service based on our population than other small cities. And then you look at, if you compare us against the number of passenger trips that we provide against our expenses, you can see we're low as well. Okay, when you talk about how your transit system can get funded, you look at the types of local revenue that can be generated. As stated earlier, you know, there is a 50% match on the operating side. So we have to come up with 50% of that local match locally. And this is just a summary of those local revenues as compared to other transit systems. Your first column, you have the types of local revenues. The second column, you have transit authorities. Those are like your MTAs, like your VIA, your Metro, those large transit properties. Then you have urban transit district, which Victoria Transit is considered an urban transit district. And there's 29 of us across the state. And then there's 37 rural transit districts. Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission is also a rural transit district, and we provide services in eight counties. So you can just see the, the types of revenues that are generated. Of course, the transit authorities, they have dedicated sales tax. And that's how most of their funds or most of their expenses are funded. Okay, this is just a summary of the types of local revenue. Of course, I talked earlier about the passenger fares. We did have our last increase in fares in 2013. We currently have a fare of $1.50 to ride on our day and evening service. So if you go to a bus stop, that's our fixed route cost. It's $1.50 to ride. If you're a senior or a person with a disability, it's half rate. Okay, and then local contributions. That example is what the city of Victoria contributes. That's considered local cash. Contributed services could be noncash, in-kind, those types of things. Of course, we have no sales tax revenues. Okay, there's other types of revenue that you can generate. Auxiliary transit revenues, which are revenues by advertising, other contract revenues. We're currently prohibited from doing charter service, so we don't. You can, but there's a lot of regulations involved in providing charter service. And then school bus service, we don't do that as well. Non-transit-related revenues, those are revenues from other activities. If you have a facility, you could rent it out, those kind of things, which we do not. And then other contracts. We currently have had a contract with medical transportation since 2011, 2012. So we've had that contract. It was directly with the Department of Health and Human Services. Now, the state's gone to a brokerage system, and there's only several brokers now in the state of Texas. So we contract with that broker, which is MTM, Medical Transportation. Okay, this is a slide of revenue comparisons for small cities. And Victoria's highlighted our current population, the amount of federal, state, how much fare box we're received. And this is for 2018. And I put a little box explaining what those contract revenues represent, which is our medical transportation and our elderly and disabled program. And then the other revenues is where the city of Victoria, the 205, 209, is represented. And then we had some vehicle sales, so that's part of that other revenue. Okay, this is an example of the same, sort of the same slide that you saw previously. We can look at Victoria compared to other cities. Some other cities receive a lot more local match. Currently, the local participation or local contributions make up about 14% for Victoria. Okay, this is the slide, just breaking down and comparing us from previous years. We looked at the last eight, seven years plus the current. And as you can see, our expenses did fluctuate some. We had a change in service in 2017. That's when we got rid of the Sunday service. We no longer provide services on Sunday. So that was why there was a decrease in expenses. Also, I wanted to bring to your attention, under transit contract revenues, that's our medical transportation program. In the beginning, like I said, we were contracting directly with Health and Human Services Commission. They changed their whole model, and now they've gone to a brokerage model. And so we have to subcontract out. And so as you can see, those, we don't have any control over the trips. Those trips are given to us. And so as you can see, our contract has gotten lower and lower since we started in 20, the early 2013. It's gone from 27%, now it's projected for 2019 at 10.9%. And that's how we supplemented our transit program, was by those contract revenues. Okay, this is our budget for 2020. The, there's not a lot of significant changes to the budget as far as expenses. We try to keep our expenses low on the, I do want to point out, though, as you recall, in 2017, we had a bus fire that destroyed 73% of our fleet. We've since replaced that entire fleet. So we anticipate a decrease in our maintenance costs. So those costs that are represented there do represent a decreased cost of maintenance. Below, we've color-coded how those federal and state revenues are distributed. As you can see, we anticipate for FY '20 and FY '19 to spend about $605,891 in federal money. That's 50% of the expenses. So the other 50% has to come from somewhere, and that's from local revenues. We're fortunate that Techstat allows the state funds to be used as match. But that's only limited to the amount of available state funds that we have. And then we can use program income. We have some small contracts with Affection Arms, Adult Daycare, Endeavour. And then, of course, the city's, Victoria's match. And then our medical, medical contract revenues through MTM. So those combined in that yellow make up that remaining 50% that we're required to put in. On the capital side, you have an 80/20, as explained earlier. We're required to match capital expenses with 20% local revenues. In that far left at the bottom, there is a block that I've blocked out that represents all the funding that we anticipate for FY '20. We're gonna roll over some FY '19 federal money because we don't have any local match to draw those dollars down. So if we had local match, we could do more because we do have that federal money, but we have to have that 50% match. I want to point out in the green, we're gonna have excess revenues in the amount of $125,000 in federal money that we won't be able to access unless we have more local money. Okay, as stated earlier, we operate about 18 vehicles every day, and they're used for our fixed route service and our ADA complimentary pair transit service. These are, like I stated earlier, medical transportation. This is how many passenger trips we're providing, Affection Arms. And then we have a special program through, a grant program called 5310. It specifically targets senior 65 and older individuals with disabilities. And it's a competitive grant. We have to compete against the state, other cities for that funds. But we've been successful for the last several years. And so basically, we're giving vouchers to seniors and people with disabilities, and it gives them greater access to transit in Victoria. We have several seniors, several people with disabilities that they rely on their family members for transportation. Now they're more independent, they can go out and eat, they don't have to wait until their son or daughter get home from work. So it's been a very successful service. And I'd be glad to, that's the end of my presentation, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. We can go back to the budget or any other slides that you want additional information on. Yes, Ms. Scott?
I think I lost something when you were going through the budget. You mentioned, you mentioned something in green, and you said you couldn't access those funds because you didn't have local funds?
That's federal money that we won't be able to draw down because we don't have the 50% match for it. So we have $125,000 in extra federal money that's not in our budget. And we could do more things with it if we had local match.
And so you need a 50% match?
Yes, if we're to access those funds. Or we could move some of that over to capital and, and do some type of capital project with it, but we need, we still need matching dollars. And if we move it over to capital, your match is gonna be 20%.
Does a county give you any money?
No, sir, they don't.
Thank you for this presentation. One of the concerns I brought up last year at Budget Time was the continued decrease of federal and state funds. And then, of course, you can see it with the transit contract revenues continuing to go down. The city's percentage continues to increase, while the dollar figure remains the same at 209,000. Our actual amount that we're contributing to the budget as a percentage of the budget keeps going up. If you look at the spreadsheet on page, I guess it's slide 11, the 20, the second 2019 figure, which would be 2020, those percentages on the right aren't correct. They should be 60.1%, 16.9%, 11.4% and 11.5%. So historically, if you take, you know, I pointed it out last year. So if you just take 2013 through 2018, City Victoria's contributed about 9.67% of the budget with our 209,000. We're now up to 11.4%. So I don't know how to fix it with them going down, where our portion keeps increasing and just the citizens of Victoria are picking up the slack for decreased funding from state and federal funds. But it's something we need to be mindful of and keep an eye on. I don't want to get 10 years down the road and we're the ones ponying up the 1.8 million. Or our entire budget's just 209,000 for transit. So take the opportunity to talk to your US representative, state reps, state senators. Make sure to keep the, the funding in mind. Otherwise, you're just placing more burden on local taxpayers.
But if I saw the numbers correctly, as you presented them, in comparison to other communities, we use our transit a lot more, correct?
That's correct.
So the need is there?
The need is there, and it's far greater.
So we just have to figure out how to equitably take care of that need?
Yes, I commend you on your, your, the way you're operating the transit system. It's very efficient, especially relative to the other communities. And I appreciate you sitting down with me earlier this week, or, is it this week or last week? And going through it with me.
Yes, I appreciate any time, you know, if you want me to come back and, you know, something pops up in your head and said, I should have asked this question, I'd be glad to come back.
No, you've always been very available, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Is there, have you approached the county? We may have asked you that last year, but picking up on what Mr. Lovegren said.
No, we, no, we have not approached the county, but that's some, that's something that we could do.
You, your transit goes into the county, correct?
But it's, no, it's primarily in the city. Our rural transit system that we operate on, provide services in Victoria County.
Okay, the rural.
And that's a separate program. Yeah, it's a separate budget, separate program, yeah. And before, they have assisted with capital on the county side.
That's, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, we're all gonna say it, that the city is in the county.
Yes.
Lisa, and the county, excuse me. The county couldn't help you with matching the 20% so that you could use those 125,000?
They, I can, I certainly will, yes. I certainly will ask them.
That's a lot of money to lose, you know, so if you could get them to help you with that, 20% is not a big number for that amount, so I would think that, you know, to use it somehow.
What would be some examples of one-time capital expenditures that you need?
Okay, for instance, we, I don't know if all of council is aware, but we did receive a $1.2 million competitive grant in 2018. The grant is almost ready to be awarded by Federal Transit. We were only one of nine cities in the, the whole state of Texas that received that funding. So we're very proud of our application. We had an application that scored very highly. That 1.2 million is gonna be used for vehicle replacements, and it's also gonna be used for passenger shelters. As you know, in the last several years, we've had a lot of the public come back to us and said, you know, we would like bus, improvements at our bus stops. Passenger shelters, benches, maybe some solar lighting in our stops that are, that we have in the evening routes. So we're gonna spend about $600,000 on passenger improvements, those passenger amenities for those stops. That's a separate funding that we received. And we certainly can target that $125,000 and move that to capital. Like, and that type of match, it's 20%.
So you could cover more of the bus stops?
Yes.
Because I think we only had, what did you say?
59.
Yeah, 59 total?
Right, and we have probably another 40 or 50 that need to be covered.
Okay, so.
What is the timing of the 125,000? How much time do you have to draw it down?
It's 18 money, so it's the year it was appropriated, plus an additional four. So we have several years that we can target that.
So you could do something in phases?
Yes, we could. We could say this would be, we're gonna do 10 shelters in FY '20 and do 10 shelters in '21. And so we could utilize all that money before it lapses.
And tell us again how much each shelter costs, because I don't think that this body knows.
Okay, the shelter itself, with the bench, trash can and sign, you're talking between $9,000 and $10,000. But that doesn't take into account if the area that we put the shelter in needs additional improvements to make it safe for the walking public. So we have to look at sidewalks, we have to look at curb cutouts to make it accessible. So it might increase that specific location if we had to maybe do a small shelter, I mean, a small sidewalk project.
I'm just thinking about the location of some of the shelters, and it makes sense that they would be at an intersection, but since most of our population doesn't really pay attention to intersections, just crosses wherever they want to, we could probably put shelters in the middle of the, in the middle of the block. Not necessarily the smart thing to do, but... Just thinking about, you know, if there's an area that's looks safer, instead of building a sidewalk that people may not use.
And we do look at, in fact, I'd like to thank Julie and her department. They've been very helpful as far as providing technical assistance for us when we're developing these shelter projects. Because we look at, at, they help us look at the safety portion of those vehicles that are on the road and make sure that our shelter's not in the, you know, to where it's blocking the inner, you know, the, the site. So when somebody's at a stop sign, our shelter shouldn't block the view, you know. So we look at those kind of things as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So next up, we'll have Julie come up and go through Development Services.
Good evening. So I have a short presentation, because we're relatively small budget. But just to start off with our department stats, we are a department of 26 full-time employees through four divisions. We have planning services, development center, code enforcement, and GIS services. And again, a little bit more of our department stats. Our code enforcement cases, you'll see we have the last two fiscal years and our current fiscal year to date, as of June 13. You will see a decline in our code enforcement cases, and that's due to a few reasons. One, we are tracking our solid waste cases differently. And so only solid waste cases that do not have active utility accounts are now being put into our web enforcers program. We also are increasing our municipal court cases and our building standards commission cases, which of course are way more labor-intensive than our environmental-type cases. So in 2017, we took 11 cases to the Building Standards Commission. In 2018, that jumped to 29. And so far this year, we have 37 going to the commission. You also see in building inspections, 2018, we had a huge year. And of course, that's related to Hurricane Harvey recovery activity. And then our permit activity also was a, we saw a huge jump in 2018. And going forward, we will have to track that differently as a result of House Bill 852, where we can no longer request values for residential permits. So we'll have to change how we're tracking those things. So our budget overview is pretty simple, it's pretty flat. We are down to about $10,000 in personnel. Our maintenance and operations are increasing by 41,000, and our capital is also increasing by 6,300. So that makes our total recurring expenses increasing by 36,000. Our one-time expenses are down by 83,000, and our total budget is down by about 46,000. So our recurring expenses are involved, the personnel is down because of baseline adjustments, which was a... which was due to an employee retirement. Our maintenance and operations are increased because of a $50,000 increase in the demolition budget. As you know, for several years, we didn't fund that. Last year, we funded it at 60,000, but we have a great need to kind of catch up on our substandard building activity. And then this year, we just have a larger number of computer replacements in the cycle, and so our capital is up 6,300. Our one-time expenses are down mainly due to the cost of aerials last year. We also funded a drainage study in fiscal year 2019, and then we are requesting money for a thorough master plan, which actually, we're just requesting a portion of it, the rest we're hoping to pay for with using MPO funds.
Can you elaborate on this drainage study, since it's different than what we'll talk about later?
Yes, so I don't know how aware the council is of our map modernization program, or project that FEMA did way back in 2006, where they studied our floodplain areas. Those maps, or their preliminary maps published by FEMA, they have not yet been adopted because of some new zones and issues down in the ports, so FEMA has held off on adopting those, but I think we're getting a little bit closer. You may remember when we amended our flood damage prevention ordinance, we started using those for regulatory purposes inside the city limits, even though the preliminary maps have not yet been adopted. But, and this actually will probably be coming back to council because the bid came in much higher than we expected. But for the Lone Tree Creek portion, which is the Meadow subdivision near East High School, a large portion of that neighborhood is currently with the effective maps, not in the floodplain, but in the preliminary maps, almost the entire neighborhood is shown to be, being placed into the floodplain with the preliminary maps. So this study would further study that area, because the limits of the map modernization project stopped right around John Stockbar. So the drainage study would further study that neighborhood and help us do a letter of map revision, so that it once again takes those homes out of the floodplain, because I don't think any of us has ever seen the water out of that big drainage channel, so...
We don't have any plan to formally adopt those FEMA maps, do we?
FEMA will formally adopt those maps.
If they do it without fixing the port area, I think we should join with the port in pushing back on those, so that they don't get adopted countywide. I think it's something that we need to be mindful of and make sure we present a united front for Victoria County, as well as the county doing it, the city and the port pushing back on those maps, because they're, they are not right. And the port's working very hard with the US Congressman's office to hopefully get FEMA to recognize some of the boundaries that are out there that they don't recognize right now, like the levee.
Sounds like a big one.
It is. It is, and I don't, I just want to make sure that we don't go and either procedurally, if it doesn't come through council, but that we don't adopt those until the port's satisfied.
How much of that is in our control versus not?
The FEMA maps, the adoption of them is really not in our control. Inside the city limits, of course, we do regulate, you know, the floodplain through, and through our participation in the NFIP program, but as far as the port and the development activity out of there, out there, the county would be responsible for all of the enforcement regulation, you know, actions regarding the floodplain, but they are, there's an issue with the maps, especially as it relates to our economic development potential.
How many homes are affected in that neighborhood if they go into the floodplain?
I don't have that exact figure, but if I had to hazard a guess, it would be between 50 and 100.
And wouldn't each one of those, if they probably have existing mortgages, have to purchase?
Yes.
Flood insurance to continue to have those mortgages in place?
Yes.
So it could be quite a burden.
So the flood study is to prevent that.
Yeah.
So we need to be very diligent in, in how we deal with this.
Can you also go a little more into detail on the thoroughfare master plan?
Yes, so our thoroughfare master plan has been amended over the years, but it was last comprehensively written and looked at in 1998, that's when we first adopted our current version. And so while the map is pretty good, the overall plan definitely needs to be looked at. We are hoping to maybe capitalize on the fact that we are just coming off of our MTP, our Metropolitan Transportation Planning efforts with, through the MPO, where we're getting a lot of our public input and really looking at, you know, the entire road system countywide. But the MTP really focuses on state, our National Highway System roads, state roads, and so a thoroughfare master plan digs a little bit farther down and looks at our local roads, and so we're hoping to redo, you know, comprehensively redo the master plan, but also use some of the MPO funds, so that we can get it done.
Can you talk about how it's split-funded?
Yes, so the thoroughfare master plan, using MPO funds, will have to look at the entire county. We are proposing to do 50,000 out of this year for MPO budget and 20,000 for general fund, but we hope to add a contract and have it a two-part contract, and we'll be coming back next year and asking for another 20,000, and then also using MPO funds in next fiscal year to try and get enough money so that we can do an entire new plan. Any other questions? And so just last slide is a few budget challenges to be thinking of. Our code enforcement caseload continues to increase, especially as we sort of tackle the substandard buildings and utilizing municipal court, those activities are, take a lot more time than processing environmental-type complaints. As well as our planning services caseload, we are staffed to be reactionary and to process our plans, and so sometimes we have a problem in actually doing the plan implementation, like a comprehensive plan implementation efforts, and those sort of long-term planning efforts. That concludes my presentation, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just one question. Julie, the 50,000 for demolition, is that coming from CDBG funds, or is that in addition to the CDBG funds?
That's in addition to CDBG funds.
Okay, so this comes from general fund?
Uh huh, yes ma'am.
Okay.
What's the amount of grants? I think when I was on that commission for a very long time, there were grants available to some of the folks for demolition, correct?
The CDBG monies.
So are those, are those staying steady, or are they declining?
We've actually increased them, if you, if, I think, in our, my last meeting, I went over, I think it was 125,000 that we increased this next program year for demolition funds, and then the general fund, we already had 60,000 from last year, so we're increasing that to, by 50,000, so we'll have a total of 110,000.
Because I know the one year when we didn't meet a lot, because the demolition wasn't funded, but the problem didn't diminish.
Right, so we actually changed our CDBG program. Before, the owner would have to come and apply for those funds before we initiated the building standards commission process, and obviously, we saw a great need for being, having funds to demo, and so we reviewed the program and did some research and realized that that was just an internal city of Victoria policy, and so we amended our program, so now we can offer the applicant, or the property owners, you know, the option to go through that application process, if we can get them to participate, and then those CDBG funds can be used. So we actually are able to use a lot more of those CDBG funds, but we did have many years where we weren't adequately funding our demo program, and so we do have some catch-up, especially after Hurricane Harvey.
Julie, so what happens if you can't contact the owner? Can you still use CDBG funds, or do you use general?
That's where we have to use general funds.
Okay.
Leah, how many employees do you have doing code enforcement?
Five. We have four officers and a supervisor that is also out in the field regularly, in addition to her supervisory duties.
Well, there's a lot of paperwork involved, because there's statutory requirements that have to be checked off, and that takes a lot of time, when you see what all has to be done.
Well, the length of time to complete a case is...
Before you can even present the case to the commission, so it is a labor-intensive project. If they do actually what they're charged with, and really look at each one of those items to consider.
Changing the subject just a little bit, when you went through the department's stats, you made a comment about permit activity, that we can't track that anymore. I know that we've changed the, the way our permitting fee structure is set up, but do we no longer have that information?
Yes, I'm sorry, I misspoke. We can track permit activity, it's just gonna be different. So we can no longer capture residential building permit values, so going forward, we will be reporting on the commercial permit values, so whenever you see a value, that will be related only to commercial building permits, and then we'll have to figure out a different way to track the residential. I guess most likely, we'll be reporting back on the total amount of residential square footage that's being built, and so we can sort of, you know, tie that to the standard $120 square foot for new residential to get a good estimate, but we are no longer allowed to ask in the building permit process, what's the value of that new residential structure.
So it's not just that we can't base it on that, we can't even ask for it?
That goes for additions too?
All residential.
And consequently, that doesn't go, get transferred to the appraisal district?
But we still definitely...
But yet, we want market value.
We can still definitely track the commercial, and so we will be, we're still reporting that, but it will look, it will go down when you minus out the residential.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions for Julie? Okay, thank you. So next up, we're gonna have Joel talk about Explore Victoria.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Joel Novasad. I am the manager of the Victoria Convention and Visitors Bureau, and this evening, we'll go over the CVB budget for fiscal year 2020, as well as the Boot Fest 2019-2020 financial standing going forward. The CVB is funded 100% by hotel occupancy tax, which can only be used to spent, spent to increase overnight travel to Victoria. The role of the CVB is we, to, the position Victoria as a travel destination to a diverse audience through marketing, which includes through multiple mediums, traditional and digital. Sell Victoria as a sports, meeting, and group tour destination, which includes sales efforts and servicing. Enhance the visitor experience in Victoria. We do operate a visitor center at 700 North Main with services about 1,000 people per year, and we also work to help our local travel partners be successful. Just some images of some of the group tours and meetings. We do have a number of them, often sometimes come to the visitor's center. We service approximately between five and 10 groups per month. Some of those do produce a significant hotel impact. We did have a quite an involvement with the Victoria Master Gardeners Conference back in April, the 25th through the 27th, which produced approximately 340 room nights, so some of those service groups that we service have been very impactful. We do operate the visitor's center at 700 North Main. We do have about 1,000 visitors annually. Our winter months are typically our most heavy with our winter Texans, many of them spending time in RV parks. And supporting our tourism partners is a big part of what we do. We do hold quarterly partnership meetings, quarterly tourism partnership meetings in February, May, August, and November at a variety of Victoria venues. Our attendance averages about 35 individuals, and it includes a mix of hoteliers, attractions, and representatives from cultural and arts groups. The CVB staff is four individuals, includes myself, Nancy Britton, our marketing representative, Bridget Postel, our guest services specialist, and Kristin Kopecchi, our group sales and services representative. Next slide is a breakdown of our budget request for fiscal year 2020. To go over some of the changes there, there is a variance in our personnel due to a market adjustment for two of our positions. Maintenance and operations did go down by 73,947 dollars due to some of those one-time expenses, including a wayfinding sign project, historic interpretive display project, and a website redesign project, which will not be requested for in the following fiscal year. A no-capital request, which last year had included some office equipment, some computer equipment, so you do see a total drop of 73,574. Any questions at this time? Some budget highlights for the CVB. All of these are flat from the year before, our advertising and marketing, which includes a number of mediums. Our primary ones are digital advertising through Facebook, traditional advertising, Texas highways, Texas highways events calendar, a number of traditional mediums, and also includes direct support of events here in Victoria, like the Texas Mile, which, looking at Star Reports Hotel Occupancy Impact, is one of the most impactful events of our annual year. Brochures for our visitor guide, maps, Old Victoria Driving Tour brochures, sports marketing, which a large part of that is underwriting the cost of the hotel rooms for umpires and staff for the softball tournaments that take place at the U Sports Complex. There was a very successful one this last weekend, and we partner with Coward Sports Events to provide payment for those rooms, which makes those tournaments, helps make those tournaments possible. Group meeting sales and services, which includes lead generation, also provides underwriting of services. We mentioned the Master Gardeners, we did provide underwriting of shuttle bus transportation, which they required for their conference attendees. And then our public relations, which do include expenses for our quarterly tourism partnership meetings, and also could include expenses for a hospitality training that we have recently met with UHV Small Business Development Center, very much looking forward to that this fiscal, coming fiscal year, could be a great thing for our community. Looking at the Boot Fest fund balance at this time, you can see that Boot Fest currently has a fund balance of 112,669. Estimated reserve fund balance after Boot Fest 2019 and partial expense paid for Boot Fest 2020 is 29,598. Boot Fest has been operating off that reserve fund for the last three Boot Fest, which includes this one. So going forward, there would need to be probably discussion on what a funding mechanism in the future of Boot Fest would be, but as for Boot Fest 2019, we do plan on having full funding for the festival. And it will take place again October 4th and 5th in downtown Victoria. We have many of our popular features returning, and staff is working very hard and looking forward to that event this coming October. So at this time, I can answer any questions you may have.
Joel, in the past, did Boot Fest, was it included in your presentation for, or is it a totally separate budget?
It had been included in the past, and as such as it was this year, and we do have, as I mentioned, the funding for this coming, coming Boot Fest for 2019.
Any other questions for Joel? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're gonna talk about everybody's favorite topic. Public works.
I'm honored to follow the fastest presentation ever. Good job, Joel. So, all right, well, good evening, everybody. Today here, we're talking about the 2020 Public Works proposed budget. Give you a little bit of background about Public Works first. We process about 12,000 or so work orders on average per year, kind of the breakdown of how those are done, or what divisions hit those is in front of you. And it hits everything from street failures and potholes, which, which seem to be the most popular, all the way to concrete repairs and sign replacement and all the other items that you see there. Our funding is divided up into two different funding sources. General fund divisions or, or the engineering, streets, and traffic control divisions, and the divisions that are funded by the Water and Wastewater Fund are water production, wastewater treatment, water distribution, wastewater collection, utility billing, and industrial pretreatment, stormwater, environmental. So starting with the engineering division... So starting with the Engineering Division, seven full-time employees responsible for the design, management, oversight of all the city CIP projects. In addition, we, the Engineering Division helps out some of the other departments with some of their, their projects they may have. 2020 proposed budget is $757,888, which is about $9,380 higher than the previous year. The largest variance there is the M&amp;O side, and that is, has to do with the lease program, vehicle lease program that Gilbert talked to you about a little bit yesterday. And that's a lease of two half-ton pickups. Moving on to the streets and drainage, it's 27 full-time employees responsible for 324 miles of roadways and 452 miles of storm sewer. 2020 budget there is, proposed budget is $6,850,000, five, or $850,549, which is a total increase of about $588,000. The largest variance again is in the M&amp;O, which is $664,785. And that is primarily due to several items. It's a decrease of, it's a net of several items. It's a decrease of $117,000 in the vehicle and equipment purchases line item, along with an increase of about $260,000 to cover, in professional services, to cover a storm drain master plan that we'll be talking about in a few minutes, along with a payment data collection system that we'll also talk about. And finally, there was an increase of $512,000 to cover some additional residential street rehabilitation, rehabilitation in the CIP program. So one-time expenses, six-yard concrete truck, $212,000, almost $213,000. I can tell you that we have a two-yard concrete trailer right now that is down more than it is working, and we're in dire need of this concrete truck. And if it's a proven budget, I can't wait to put it to use. That truck will do everything from utility patches on concrete streets to curb and gutter and sidewalk replacement, plus a new sidewalk building or construction.
What do you, what do you save? Do you go to the plant, the ready-mix plant, and pick that concrete up in that truck?
No, no, sir, we mix that concrete.
You mix it yourself?
Yes, sir, we buy the Portland cement in the bag, and we mix all the materials at our stockyard.
Because I know we, we had to do this similar for the Calhoun School District, and they got a pretty good discount on concrete per yard when they received it in their truck.
Yeah, we actually save a lot of money because the, the jobs by doing it ourselves. And the reason that is, because the jobs that we have are typically smaller jobs, you know, six yards or less. So what we have to do is pay for that, that concrete truck to come from the plant. And they charge us what they call a shortload. So they actually charge us more money for less product. It's much more cost-effective to do this ourselves. So the next item is a payment data collection project. This project here is something that Mr. Garza kind of brought to our attention. It's something that he did in the, at the city of Kingsville, and it's pretty, pretty neat. And what this is, is that you hire a company to come in and, and do a study of your roadways using some very high-tech and sophisticated scientific equipment that measures just about everything you can think of using lasers and high-definition cameras. And at the end of it, you spit out a, a database that takes all the subjectivity out of your street inventory. And you have streets that are, are based on scientific data, or street rating based on scientific data. You can use, then use that tool to, to plan out your one-year, five-year, 10-year budgets down the road. It'll give you a concentration of where your worst streets are. It's a pretty unique tool. And I'll tell you that this, this price here, the $60,000, is, is the base price. This is something that we've just started looking at. These, these companies can do a lot more than just this. And there may be a chance that we could come back to you and, and look at possibility of asking for a little bit, little bit more money to do something that's worthwhile as well. But it's a very intriguing concept, and I think it's worthwhile.
And just to kind of add to that, an example of some of those things that they could do in addition to just the street rating, since they're gonna be driving all the streets, imagine a, like a Zamboni or whatever it's called, that cleans the ice on an ice rink. It's kind of a machine that looks like that, and it's got all the technology to it. But as it's driving around, depending on what we choose, we could also have it look at curb and gutter, to be able to produce a report of what the condition of the curb and gutter is, where it's located, where it's not. There's a component for sidewalks.
Absolutely.
There's a component of the cameras could detect signage. If we don't already have inventory of all the signs and where they are, and then it gives you the ability to put all this stuff, you know, on a map. So it's pretty neat, it's a tool, really. And so we, I think it's worthwhile going through that exercise so that as we have more conversations about CIP and other street needs, everybody's coming from the same place of where the needs are and what they are. Of course, there's more to it than just the condition, right? That you, at some point, yes, you have to take into account vehicular traffic and things like that, but at least the condition aspect of it, let's take the subjectivity out of that piece and just see what, see what comes out.
In the past, grading's been done by interns?
It's been a combination. You know, sometimes it's been an intern, other times we've used a, an engineering inspector that may have been on light duty or something like that. So it, it, it just kind of changes with the needs.
But if he's on light duty, you know he's not happy.
A lot of subjectivity.
There is, yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir. Okay, the next item is a drainage master plan project. You know, I'll try to talk to the, about this as much as I can, but I've never been involved in a drainage master plan project. But the last time we did one was in 1998, which I wasn't even working for the city at that time yet. And it had a small update in 2007. So our current drainage master plan is, is way behind the times. So I know that this, you know, we're looking for an engineering, put out an RFP, have an engineering firm come in and look at, you know, our entire drainage master plan, update our ordinances, look at our basins, look at the way we, we manage our storm water, and just go through the whole gamut of, of everything that we do with, with storm water. As part of that, we hope that we can even come out with some projects that need to be done, you know, short-term and long-term, and that there may even be some funding mechanisms that they recommend in there for it.
This would look at drainage underneath the, in, in our infrastructure, as well as just detention ponds and things like that?
It would look at the pipes underground, it would look at your bar ditches, your detention ponds, your outfalls, if it's drainage, it would look at it, curb and gutter, everything.
And once, and once we get, beginning with that process, you know, we'll have more conversations on what your expectation is for that plan to cover. Because it can range from them simply looking overall, so they could look at, you know, your creeks and, you know, the, talking about the floodplain maps, you know, kind of looking at all those and how we can contain. But it could also go down to neighborhoods. So if there are specific areas of town that we know are, there are flooding issues, we could also say specifically look at that area and see what needs to be done. So there's, or a combination of the two. And so it's flexible. Obviously, this engineering company would work for us, right? And so we could structure our expectation of the plan however we think best meets our needs within our budget. Obviously, there's constraints, right? So that's a benefit for us, right? Like most master planning efforts, we can also include public comment. When we went through the master planning, for the drainage master plan effort in Kingsville, for example, we had surveys that went out to the community to help us identify areas that maybe we didn't know were flooding issues. We had public input meetings where we invited, you know, stakeholders, like the university and others, that are more intimately familiar with the drainage situations around their places of work, right? And so it's a, could be a pretty engaging process. And ultimately, it'll pop out a product to give us a sense of how much money do you need to address all these issues, right? So for instance, when we went through it in Kingsville, it was in the hundreds of millions of dollars, right, to address everything that needed to be addressed. But at least it's, we understand, okay, what the need is, and then we can start having conversations about priorities and funding sources, and et cetera, et cetera. But it's kind of hard to talk about priorities and funding sources if you don't just, if you don't first know what you're dealing with. And so that would be the first step.
Is this study kind of two-part? An engineering study based upon examining sizes of infrastructure, sizes of pipes and stuff? And then is there a component that goes in to see, are these, are these systems fully functional? I mean, do we have sediment in, in the pipes or anything like that?
That typically, it depends if we want to structure it that way or not. Typically, they don't. Because typically, that's an additional expense for, because that's more of a maintenance thing, right? And so we're talking about the condition of the existing pipes. Well, that's something different than this plan. Now, if there's concern, so for instance, this plan is not gonna run a camera through pipes. They're gonna look at, yes, okay, that's a, you know, I don't know, 18-inch diameter stormwater pipe, and it needs to be a box culvert, or it needs to be this, you know, or whatever. So it's more big-picture planning. And typically, they'll provide conceptual ideas on possible solutions to some of the issues that we deem priority. But it won't go into the weeds of, you know, looking at things like that, or into the weeds of specifics on cost. They'll probably give you a range of, well, it could cost between this and that, because the idea is for us to use it as a planning tool to then be able to say, okay, now we get it, the next step would be focusing on this area of town only, or this one. And then at that point, we can dive deeper into.
But that's a component that if you, if you, if you kind of felt like there were areas of the community that this was more susceptible, you could add it into a, into a study or follow-up with it later.
Or just something, maintenance will be part of the conversation because there definitely is a need for improved maintenance in the system. So that's, that definitely would be part of the conversation, yeah.
I don't know if I'm totally sold on this master plan project. Sounds like we're going out and searching for projects that we need to put on the CIP. We already have limited funding to accomplish what we know is in front of us for streets and utilities. We know what the issue is on Ben Wilson. We know we need another box culvert going down Red River.
Right.
I don't know what we're trying to search for where there's huge issues with drainage in the city.
Yeah, it's a good point. You know, I mean, I'm, of course, only familiar with the ones that have been brought up in the month that I've been here, like Ben Wilson as an example.
But we know what the, the solution is there. So I mean, what, why go study it again? We know what, it floods there, and then drainage isn't big enough to get down to Lone Tree Creek.
I think, I think a big part that we're, that we're missing, I think, is that this plan also takes a look at maintenance and takes a look at your ordinances. And so it's much more than just CIP. So yes, CIP can be, is a part of it, but it's much more than just CIP.
If I may add one more comment, this, this plan will not just look at it now also. It's gonna look at your build-out in the future. So it's gonna tell you kind of where you need to be looking in, in the future as well. You know, what, what, where your capacity is gonna have challenges as they stand right now as, as you build out. And so while, yeah, we may know some of our problems right now, we're helping to identify those problems that may come up, you know, 15, 20 years or more in the future as well.
And they utilize some pretty high-level modeling tools to be able to do that. Again, it's a planning tool.
And I'm just thinking, Kingsville came up with $120 million worth of projects. We're double the size of them.
Right. Well, but it's, I mean, I mean, it's, it's apples and oranges, you know, we also don't have-
I look at what we have for, for our projects right now that we can't even get to and fund. I don't know why we'd spend $200,000 to go find more projects. And the big one that I know about for drainage is still Ben Wilson, and we know the solution. And it's a four-to-five-million-dollar project that we can't get to.
Yeah, I think it's more than that, actually.
So you mean, we can put it on the CIP and move it?
Yeah.
I don't know, and is there, if, if we go forward with it, is there a chance to partner at this cost with Drainage District 3? Why wouldn't they participate in it?
It's, it's possible. I mean, it's something we can always look at, talk to them about.
Or else that area gets excluded?
I don't know that that's, that's my area to comment on.
It just depends on how far you want to take that study, because the Ben Wilson- Oh, no, I know. But it's like the, the, the so, solution on, on Ben Wilson, if you start taking that pipe down, you know, you can take it on down Delmar under the deal, but there's also drainage problems along in front of Walmart and stuff that fills up that ditch at that light, that you could combine that to maybe take care of two, two problems that are jointly there. But I, I don't know to what extent. I mean, it's worth looking at a, at a presentation by somebody or an RFQ of what would be included.
I don't remember that section of Houston Highway flooding before Walmart went in there.
One, one additional thought too-
I hear people complaining.
I know, but it didn't flood before Walmart went in there. And so does it really rely on the city to fix that issue that was created by a development? Or was their engineering bad?
I don't know, it depends upon what, what, what they did and what we required as a study for that drainage, and the knowledge of the capacities of those systems.
I also, I take issue with saying that it didn't flood before then. I mean, it's developed now, and so the standing water is more of an issue. But I remember water in the cornfield. I mean, that area didn't drain. And to some extent, the Lone Tree retention area or detention area that was built kept some of the water from flowing down across Houston Highway into that area and allowed that area to drain better, if that makes, that makes sense. And so that alleviated it from years ago, but that area still, I remember standing water there before the Walmart was built.
Yeah, and it's fine if it's in a cornfield, but they should deal with that when they build their site so that that water, now you have all the impervious cover. That should have been taken into, into account when they built their, their location.
And that site drains just fine, it drains into the, the standing ditches that now we deal with.
And just food for thought too, and I don't know if we have any issues of drainage on Tech Start related right away. But in Kingsville, this was a big issue for us, and the direction that we received in Kingsville from Tech Start was, you know, we've designed our storm water to our standards, which are typically different and typically less than what everybody would like. And their direction was, if the city wants us to reassess what we're doing, we're not gonna take the first step. Y'all show us, you know, what you think is a solution, and then we'll go from there. So for us, a big benefit from going through the Drainage Master Plan was to be able to sit with Tech Start afterwards, which we did, to tell them, hey, look, these are all the issues that your roads are causing our neighborhoods. Let's work together to find a solution. And they were very appreciative of the fact that the city took the first step in, in looking into that. Again, I don't know if that's an issue with us, with Tech Start, but that, that was a big benefit that, that we experienced in, in Kingsville.
Well, at a minimum, I really think we should talk to Drainage District 3, because they have a portion inside the city. And that's a whole different basin that drains in a different direction, and they need to be part of that study.
And just because we budget $200,000, of course, doesn't mean that we'll use it all. We're obviously literally very preliminary with this concept and with, and with this idea. And so once we get into the fiscal year, obviously, we'll have more discussion and could probably come back and have a more thorough presentation on what it would look like before we actually proceed with an RFP or RFQ. And then that way, you know, there's more conversation then. So don't feel like because it's in the budget that we won't do our adequate due diligence, because quite frankly, I myself aren't familiar with, you know, even the, the drainage across the city as I would like. But in the month that I have been here, I know it's come up. And so that was, that was a big reason why we put it in there.
Well, at some point, you have to know the capacity of a system to take a certain amount of water. And, and so without some sort of drainage master plan, at some point, you know, you can't expect an engineer on, on a single project to, to actually analyze all of the structures all the way to the bay and what their capacities are. So at some point, that engineer has to have some reliability, some ability to rely upon what somebody tells him the capacity of this system is, is to where he designs for. And I don't know if we've ever had that much information yet. So that's the only reason, I would say- So that's the only reason, I would say let's look into it and see how, you know, accurate we think our databases are. So.
And all the more reason to see if you can't partner.
And ask Drainage District Three.
Because they take all that water to the bay, and it typically backs up out in the county where it gets a lot flatter.
Right, in fields and everything else.
Yeah, and they take sixty percent of their income or property tax income comes from the city.
It was like seventy-two, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's over sixty percent.
And, and it could create partnership opportunities. We actually did this in Kingsville where we partnered, uh, very specifically with the county. Where, um, we just partnered on the cost on some issues. Cause again, you know, you're in the city, so the water continues to flow out, out in the county. Um, so it could be an opportunity to even approach the county to say, hey, you know, we're going to go through this process. There's an opportunity here for having a professional look at maybe this issue. Um, and to include that might cost X, are you willing to partner with us on that? And we save them the trouble of going through the RFQ, save them the trouble of, you know, just managing the project. So there are partnership opportunities there, whether it's with the county or with the Drainage District.
Drainage District.
That we'd be happy to explore more.
Yeah, I said with both, the Drainage, certainly Drainage District Three, but the County Two.
And it's a great group of guys over there that run that. Sure they'd be happy to at least sit down and talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so the final item I'd like to bring your attention to on that slide is that little note at the bottom. This is not an item that, that is in the twenty twenty budget, but I wanted to at least bring it to your attention, let you know that we're looking at it. Um, Public Works is in the process, process of developing an RFQ to put out for a pilot program to hire a contractor to help us with some more pothole patching. It's become, you know, apparent that with these rains and limited staffing, we're having a hard time keeping up. So we're hoping to get something back, uh, uh, you know, a quote back that's, you know, we can do a minor, minor project on and test somebody out and see how it works. And if it comes out where it, it works great, we'll come back to council later date and, and, uh, and, and maybe ask you for some funds to fund it.
Yeah, and for now.
Your department has the gold standard in the instruction video, why would you at that point?
We, uh, we need, we need more, uh, we need help. We need, we need, we need bodies.
So we'd still be running those, those multiple trucks?
Absolutely, this would be, uh, to supplement our existing efforts.
There's definitely more we could do, I mean, I could tell you in Kingsville, we had two trucks and we're half the size. Um, and so, you know, there's more that can be done there. The logic behind this was, um, there's what, five or six positions?
I have, uh, I think it's five open positions in streets right now.
That have been open for how many years?
Off and on for at least two, maybe three.
So the idea is simply just taking some of the savings from those positions not being filled, and let's just outsource some work and see if, see if it works out that way. And that's why it's a pilot, because if it works, we'll, we'll explore it further, and if it doesn't, well, it doesn't. But at least I want to make sure that we're trying to keep up.
How much does one of those pothole trucks cost?
Uh, it was a hundred and
About a hundred and fifty?
About a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand.
Cause we actually had this conversation about, well, what, can we just buy another one? But then the problem is staff, you know, you can't hire these five people, I mean, and so, you know, it'd be pointless to buy a truck if we can't man it.
So you've got twenty-seven full-time employees, but you're running five short.
I think it's, I have that number here, let me double check that.
And I think they're taking, I think they're taking volunteers.
Streets and drainage.
That's just streets and drainage, yes sir.
And you're running five short in that?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's five, yes sir.
And we can always come back and confirm the numbers.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I wrote them down here, but, oh, here it is, uh, yeah, it's twenty-seven, twenty-seven positions and five, five vacancies right now. Okay, so I will tell you right now, this is, uh, the street CIP program, general fund for street. And, uh, I don't want anybody to, uh, to think this is written in stone, it is not written in stone. The only things up here that we know for sure are kind of been blessed by council are the seal coat maintenance in North Heights Phase Six. These other three projects, we, uh, plan to come back to you with some options. Uh, Mr. Garz, I believe that's going to be in, uh, July, last meeting in July, is that correct?
Second meeting in July is the goal.
Okay, yes sir.
To talk about the CIP again.
Okay.
I look forward to it.
Mark it on your calendar.
And then these are just some maps of the seal coat projects. Uh, we can skim through those pretty fast unless y'all actually want to see, see anything there. But moving into traffic control, unless there's some additional questions on streets, yes ma'am?
You said, I don't remember how long ago, something about, um, a crack seal program. Is that somehow in all this, and you just didn't mention it, or is that?
Crack seal program is in the CIP for twenty twenty-one, I believe.
Twenty twenty-one?
Yes, ma'am. I think it's three hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one. Gilbert's nodding his head, so.
Keep pushing those streets together until then.
We're going to do our best, yes ma'am.
I want to thank Donald and Public Works publicly, they worked on Dairy Road. They spent a week working on Dairy Road.
Maybe more.
Thank you.
You're welcome, I, I appreciate it, thank you.
Did it make a difference though?
Ye- yes, you can drive down it, it's good.
Okay, good.
Well, of course it made a difference.
Problem solved for a while.
So let's move it.
So we don't have to talk about the CIP in July anymore?
Talk about Dairy Road.
Okay.
That was a good try, I liked it. Okay, so moving into traffic control, nine full-time employees responsible for ninety signalized intersection, sixty-one school zone flashers, and over fourteen thousand five hundred street signs, and about three hundred and sixty-three miles of pavement markings and stripings. Uh, proposed budget for twenty twenty is, uh, almost two point two million. Uh, that's about, uh, ninety-two thousand dollars less than the previous year's budget. And the big item there is on the M and O side, and that's a, uh, another one of those net items. It's a increase of forty-nine thousand in professional services for two boring projects that we need to do. Uh, reduction of about forty thousand to our striping program. Uh, normally we budget two fifty, this year we're looking at two ten. Uh, increase of about thirty.
But typically that two fifty comes from one-time capital expenditures, and the two ten is recurring. So even though it's a lesser amount, and it doesn't feel like it's an improvement. Um, the idea of converting it to a recurring expense long-term is an improvement, if that makes any sense.
Doesn't get cut as easy.
Right. Well, I could cut it real easy, but yeah.
And then, uh, a decrease of about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand in vehicle equipment and vehicles and equipment purchases. So here's the one-time expenses, purchase of two signal cabinets for downtown. Uh, it's about twelve two fifty apiece for a total of twenty-four five. And those two boring contracts, both of them are Moody, one at Water and one at Goodwin. And the issue there is that we need to upgrade the wiring for those, those signal, those signals. And the conduit has been damaged underground. Uh, we can't, uh, pull the wire through, we can't get new wire, so we're going to have to bore those to put new wire in. Uh, just don't have an option there. And that takes us to the Water Waste Water Fund, are there any questions on general fund before I move on? Okay, so Water and Waste Water Fund, ninety-four full-time employees, responsible for a whole lot of stuff. I'm not going to read all of that, but there is a bunch of equipment out there, facilities that, that these men are, men and women are in charge of. Uh, twenty twenty budget overview, uh, proposed budget for twenty twenty is, uh, twenty-seven million five hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars, which is down by about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the, uh, previous year. Our, uh, big variances there are in the M and O side, uh, down three hundred and eighteen thousand on the capital side, an increase of about a hundred and seventy thousand. I can go into that detail if you want, but that's another one of those where there's a dozen, you know, changes up and down. Uh, most of those are pumps and motor replacement and things like that, but if you want me to, I can get into that detail, it's, it's up to y'all. I'm going to take that as a, as a no. So the one note I want to point out on this page on the M and O, uh, that nine point eight million dollars includes the funds for a, uh, lease purchase of backup generators for plant number three and the regional wastewater treatment plant at a hundred and one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars per year. I say lease purchase because the plan is for that contract to come to y'all with, as a lease, with an option for every year that we have that lease to purchase it if we so choose to. Uh, and every year that purchase price would go down a little bit based on, uh, the value of the generator. That hundred and one is based on the last, uh, proposal we received, uh, which was several months ago. And so we're waiting right now for an updated proposal, but I would anticipate it being, uh, uh, close to that number.
Does that include a maintenance plan where they come in and do it?
That's, that's, yes, yes sir, that's turnkey. They, uh, provide the generator, they build all the infrastructure, uh, transfer switch, you name it, everything's included with that hundred and one thousand.
They automatic transfer switch?
Yes, sir, automatic transfer switch.
What's the length of time of that typically?
Um, the one for the, uh, service water treatment plant, uh, which is what's being installed now, was, uh, I think twenty-two weeks. So that's from the time of the, uh, time of the signing, signature of the contract.
Yeah, but I mean, how, how long does this?
He means, he means the term of the lease.
Before you're able to
It was ten years, I believe. Yeah, the, the first, the proposed one was ten years, and I'm assuming that's what the next one will be.
Are they ever written where you have an option to buy them out at any time?
That's what it is.
That's, that's correct.
Exactly.
That's what it is, yeah.
And with, and with that option, you know, if there are any issues with the maintenance or the condition of the unit or whatever, we, we just don't buy it.
Any of this, um, available for, I guess reimbursement wouldn't be the right word, but grants or, uh, money from the government related to the hurricane?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure on that.
Not on this one.
John says no, so it's a no.
You can't get reimbursed.
Yeah, I know it wouldn't be a reimbursement, but it's a hardening or a something or the other. No.
If you want to wait another year or two to find out whether we get funded for it, then we can investigate that option, that's not what we're recommending.
I see, okay.
With the funds that are available today, the answer is no.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, so here's your
On that note on generators, John, do you think it's worth you providing an update on?
I'll be happy to, I got an email, excuse me. Received an email this morning from TDM, the Texas Department of Emergency Management to let us know that they are recommending, uh, both of our mitigation projects to FEMA for funding. Those are, uh, those include a project to provide emergency generators at the police station and at the community center, and a project to harden the library, uh, which is essentially a window shuttering system. It doesn't mean we have the money yet, it means that the state has recommended our projects to FEMA as primary projects, which means if FEMA approves them, they will be funded. And we will begin the process of, uh, receiving agreements from the state to, uh, to get started on those projects. The FEMA review can take anywhere from a few weeks to a few months. And they're not going to tell me which is going to be, other than the more complex the project, the longer, longer the review takes.
But it is good news.
It is very good news, we were concerned that we may be alternate projects. Meaning that even if they like the project, there's not enough money right now, and we're going to have to wait until there's more money. Or wait until another city or county fails to complete a project and they get more money back in the pot. So the good news is, we're in the, we're in the primary list, we're in the FEMA review stage right now. So, we'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's something that's been going on for quite a while already.
We submitted these grant applications at the end of December. Now, we had been working on them for much longer than that, but they were submitted the last day of Decem- or the last business day of December. Thank you.
Okay, breakdown of our funding, uh, by division. So you can see that the, uh, debt service is by far the largest cost, thirty-four percent, followed by the, uh, water distribution and water production at fifteen and fourteen percent respectively. One-time expenses for Water Waste Water Fund, there's a whole bunch of them. Uh, I'm not going to go through all of them, but if there's one that y'all jumps out at you, just let me know. Uh, first page is O and M, O and M at the top, and then some capital at the bottom. And then the final capital continued for total one-time expenses of, uh, just under one point five million dollars.
What was the Stormwater Utility Study?
Okay, Stormwater Utility Study is one that, uh, should have come out.
Yeah, it should have come out.
Yeah, but, uh, in the juggling of the budgets here recently, uh, this is going to be replaced by that two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the idea was to hold off on that until we do the Drainage Master Plan?
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, so the intention was to pull it out.
Yeah, yeah.
Was, is that what Julie talked about in developmental services?
No, ma'am.
No.
Yeah, originally this would put, was put in here as a, uh, i- is a study to help us find a way, a mechanism to fund, uh, some, uh, programs for cleaning stormwater inlets, uh, things like that, uh, pipe cleaning, things like that. And after discussing this with the city manager, we decided to pull this out. But, uh, in between changing budgets back and forth, I, I missed this one, so my, my apologies. And it had already gone out to council before I found it.
Does what Julie talked about, is that in the, just in the regular budget as opposed to these one-time expenses? Cause I thought she said part of it came from her budget and part from
You're talking about the thoroughfare master plan? Cause that's the split funded one.
Yeah, the thoroughfare plan would come from NPO federal funds plus our general fund. But the drainage study, um, is actually in, in this year's budget, and, um, that's general fund money. And that's actually studying the floodplain to show FEMA that the, the properties actually wouldn't flood, and so they should be removed.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I confused them, thank you.
Stormwater utility is something completely different, it's an enterprise fund. Um, it's just a different thing.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So CIP and W, in, in the Water Waste Water Fund projects, again, the only one is, uh, North Heights Phase Seven. This is the last of the North Heights, uh, uh, water wastewater projects. That's, uh, one point two million and be funded, uh, half and half by, uh, Water and Waste Water Fund, or the, yeah, the Water Fund and six hundred from the, uh, wastewater fund. In addition, we have some, uh, water and wastewater emergency pipe replacement money for a total of five hundred thousand, which means total pipe replacement out of, out of the Water Waste Water Fund for twenty twenty is one point seven million dollars.
So this is the last one, right?
That's the last one, yes sir, that'll be the last one. So kind of in summary, for FY twenty twenty, at our current rates, we're predicting revenues of just under twenty-seven million dollars. Staff is not recommending a rate increase for, for FY twenty twenty. Uh, recurring expenses are greater than, um, recurring revenues are greater than recurring expenses by a little over eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. We're meeting our three-month reserve requirement policy, and all bond debt coverage requirements are satisfied. I'm looking at Gilbert to make sure he's nodding his head. He's not doing either, so I guess I'm okay.
Can we go back to the slide with the generators at the bottom, a hundred and something thousand? Do we, if, when would we get the generators? If the, if we adopt the budget?
Right.
Then it's going to take how much longer to get the generators?
So we don't know exactly when we would get them, but our intention is to actually bring an action item to you soon, even before the fiscal year starts.
Thank you.
And us structure the deal where the first payment isn't due until fiscal year twenty. Um, so, uh, or maybe in August, maybe? Um, you'll have the action item to get them. We just won't have the first payment due until after the budget, at least that's our goal with it. And that way we don't have to wait till October for you to take action on it. So we can get the ball rolling since it will obviously take a little bit of time to get them.
Then how long does it take after we?
Yeah, that, that I don't know.
Six months.
It's about, it's about six months to get one.
That would be, and I would anticipate that to be the wastewater treatment plant. One would take, but the drain, uh, the, uh, pump station three is a much smaller generator.
Uh, yeah, but there's more, there's more, uh, infrastructure work to do over there because of the way the building's set up and the underground piping, avoiding all that and busting through concrete, so.
Is all those infrastructure improvements be our responsibility?
No, that'll be all turnkey done by them.
Okay.
But it's just, you have to do the engineering for it, and you have to, it, it's going to be a, that one's going to be more, more than you think.
Really?
It's going to be a tough project.
Well, it ought to be done before June first.
Absolutely.
Of the following year, that's the target. We need them in place.
The good thing is, is, is that The good thing is, is, is that once we've signed the, the contractor, you know, the, they'll start on the engineering work and also order the generator. So they'll be working on design while it, and working on the, the groundwork, the site work at the same time that generator's being, being built. So you're not waiting on, waiting on the generator afterwards. Right, I think that was the last slide, so, yep. Any other, any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Fairly longer than Joel's.
So up next, up next we have Darryl, talk about environmental services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to talk about something new and dear to my heart, and I'm the last one keeping you here tonight apparently. So I'll go through this fairly quickly. Um, so what we provide is garbage collection, curbside recycling, yard waste, tree limb, large item pickup, household hazardous waste, litter and stormwater education. Um, and we help out with, um, uh, Julie's group doing, uh, taking care of some of the, uh, things that code enforcement identifies, we'll pick up instead of contractors as we go through, and it helps save money in their budget. So, oh, I do want to make sure I, I point out that currently, I am fully staffed.
Show off.
Huh?
Show off.
Yeah, well, I was told to do that. So, uh, we pick up, uh, in the past year, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven tons of household garbage, fifty-five hundred and seven tons of yard waste, uh, those are both up. Now, I want to classify the tons for garbage. That includes stuff that we do for code enforcement. That includes stuff that Parks takes out there. All those hit the solid waste account because we don't need to have multiple accounts at the landfill. Um, so those hit our account at the city's rate, not what rate other people pay. Our curbside recycling has come down some. Um, part of that, as we know, as everybody's aware, we took glass out. But also part of that is we've seen a reduction in the amount of usage of our curbside recycling program over the last year. And then household hazardous waste is up, which is a good thing. Those are the, uh, computers, TVs, uh, gasoline, oil, paint, things that we don't need to go to our landfill that end up in our landfill, so it's good to see that that is up. And our resident number is up. We're servicing about nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one customers. Uh, that was actually the number from May. So getting into the budget, our personnel, uh, is down about seventeen thousand. Our maintenance and operation is up twenty-one six. Capital's down about twenty-two hundred. Our recurring expenses are up about seventeen hundred, but our one-time expenses are down three seventy-one. And our total proposed budget is down three, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I choked on that one. So personnel costs, uh, decrease in payroll due to baseline adjustments, uh, the same that you've heard from most of the other directors. Um, increase, uh, due to an increase in tipping fees. Um, as you'll remember, I brought to you in November, uh, our tipping fees, uh, went up. Um, we also have, uh, an outfall clean-out, pro, cleanup program. I adjusted that up another ten thousand dollars this year, you'll notice in the budget. Um, if you haven't noticed, we've been spending a lot of time, uh, cleaning up outfalls. We just did a cleanup two weeks ago on the Port Lavaca Highway entryway. Um, we're doing the mall cleanup in front of Target in the mall on a monthly basis, the last Wednesday of every month. And we're working with the University of Houston, Victoria, to do a cleanup in front of the mall through a grant from NOAA, and that's done quarterly. Our capital's down about twenty-two hundred, so our net recurring expenses are about seventeen oh three. So I'm not going to go through all these, but I do want to touch on a couple. Uh, the first is the landfill improvement project. Uh, this week, I received a letter back from the Army Corps of Engineers. We are going to be able to skip, um, part of Phase Four. If you'll remember when I talked to you about that, that was for us to get jurisdictional determination of moving that ditch. Was it man-made? Was it natural? They, we've determined that it is man-made. We will be able to move the ditch. That saves us a fairly large sum of money. Um, however, we are fixing to finish up Phase Four, start on Phase Five. Phase Five will include us developing our master plan, public hearings, and submitting our permit. So Gilbert and I kind of talked about this. Our hope is that within the next twelve months, uh, we'll be getting around to getting that other two hundred and forty-four acres permitted, which will buy us, if everyone remembers, about a hundred years of landfill space. I also want to touch base on, uh, the purchase. Last year we purchased, or currently, we're purchasing an automated truck and a brush truck. Next year, we're only purchasing an automated truck. Um, and I want to touch base on the consulting for the commercial waste pickup. Um, that Phase One is almost complete. We are meeting with Mr. Garza next week on the second, I believe, to discuss that. Our consultant will be here. We hope to be in front of council, uh, with Mr. Garza's approval, uh, either the second meeting in July or the first meeting in August, to have the consultant go through what we found, um, and explain to council what we're looking at and how all this kind of would take place. And then, uh, there is no transfer to health fund this year. Uh, so total one-time is down three hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. So garbage collection, there are no rate increases this year, um, as we stand right now. All of, I want to remind council and the public, all of our, all of our systems, garbage, recycling, yard waste, tree limb pickup, household hazardous waste, stand on their own. They are not subsidized by any, anything else. So when you pay thirteen seventy-five for your garbage pickup monthly, what we do is covered by that thirteen seventy-five per, per customer. Couple of things that we've got coming up. We'll continue to monitor the carts. Uh, we've been in this program now for twelve years. They've lasted longer than we thought they would. Um, I keep money in there. We buy several hundred carts a year. Um, when you've got about twenty-seven thousand of them out on the street, a couple of hundred years, not bad when you're into a program that's twelve years old. We, uh, will continue working on the landfill project. And then we moved this back a little bit this year, but our contract with Republic will end in twenty twenty-eight. We want to make sure that their responsibility for closure is fulfilled before they leave that contract. So we've pushed back from twenty-five, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven, so that they can close as much as possible before their contract is up. So there's not any arguing back and forth about the future cost of closing those properties. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you for keeping our rates the same.
I'll pass that along because it's the guys and their productivity that's really helped.
Yes, they're doing an awesome job and so are you.
Thank you.
Uh, those are all the presentations we have scheduled, but obviously we'd be happy to, uh, discuss anything else from yesterday or today or anything in general related to, uh, concerns or priorities that you might have. It's, it is a budget workshop, so we could talk about anything that you'd like. So I want to make sure y'all have that opportunity before we go home.
I know everybody's going to hate me, but I do have a question.
Of course.
Um, and I've been listening, uh, and this is for Mr. Raina. Uh, I've been listening to everybody talk about their different, uh, leasing programs, uh, because that is new. And I knew you, you touched on it a little bit yesterday. Uh, but could you touch on again the, the vehicle le- lease program?
Lease.
Why it's different, I guess, because as I go back through your report.
Would it be appropriate for you or Darryl to discuss?
I've worked the numbers up, so, he can try.
I can discuss.
The program?
The program.
Yeah, because recall Fleet is under Darryl.
But it's, okay, because it's across the departments.
I, well, yes, ma'am. So as, as the Director of Fleets, what we do is we, uh, look at all the vehicles that we have. We decide pri- uh, preliminary what needs to be replaced, what doesn't, based off of mileage, based off of usage, based off of expense. Um, and Gilbert actually came to us about a year ago, year and a half ago, to talk about this lease program. So we started looking into it. And what this will allow us to do, and the financial questions can, you know, Gilbert can answer that better. I think he's better prepared for that tonight than I am. But what it'll allow us to do is we have, uh, our fleet contract, we have about three hundred and fifty pieces of equipment that we have to maintain. And what this will allow us to do is take some of those light duty equipment. So we're talking cars, pickups, vans, uh, small SUVs, out of our contract with Fleet, and allow those to be, one, purchased without having to spend the money upfront. So we're not paying out twenty-one thousand dollars for a pickup or, or a, a small F one, F one fifty pickup, regular cab. We're actually going to get it through a rental program or a lease program. We'll keep that vehicle for an amount of time based off of what we've done is we've looked at, okay, if we're going to do this vehicle for public works, we know that it runs seventeen thousand miles a year. So over five years, this vehicle's going to do this many miles. We set the lease up that way to accommodate the miles so that we don't worry about these overages on mileage. And what, on the maintenance side of that, what it does is we're allowed to pull out that from our contract. They give us a card, like a credit card, uh, that goes with the vehicle. So we'll be able to take that to Firestone, uh, there's multiple places in town that will accept that for a flat monthly rate of, I believe it's thirty-five dollars a month, Gilbert, per vehicle?
It varies.
It varies, okay. And so we'll be able to take that in. Our maintenance cost on that vehicle, unless it's driver abuse or we wreck the vehicle, is going to be that rate and that's it.
And, and one, one of the things too that we forgot to kind of maybe explain is, so these vehicles, and I think it's twelve of them.
It's twelve, it's a pilot program.
So these, these twelve vehicles are vehicles that we would have had to have had replaced.
This year.
Anyway. So even though you're seeing in, budget increased by five thousand here, ten thousand there, it's saving us from having to buy that vehicle outright. And so instead, in lieu of paying, you know, twenty thousand dollars for this truck or this car or whatever, we're saying, we're not going to pay for that upfront capital expense. Instead, we'll let this other company incur that expense and we just pay a monthly kind of lease. It's almost like a lease. We're leasing these vehicles. We don't take, we don't, we don't need, we don't pay for it upfront and we don't maintain it. Um, and so through the analysis that Gilbert can go through, it, it'll end up saving us money, not only in the short term, but in the long term potentially.
Ms. Scott, do you remember how we do our backhoes and our front end loaders? We buy them for a certain amount. We use them, they maintain them, we do not maintain them. At the end, we turn those in with a guaranteed buyback. This does not have a guaranteed buyback, but we're able to keep an eye on that. And if we see that we can get a better price for that car, we will get rid of it at that time, bring in a new one, and then we'll get to split the profit.
Darryl, wouldn't that also save us on the contract that we have with the, um, the maintenance?
Eventually, yes, ma'am. With twelve cars, it's not.
Okay.
When we start looking, if this works out and we start moving forward, it would, definitely.
Cause don't we have like, um, a set amount that we pay those contractors or that for the contract?
Yeah, well, it's based off of our fleet size. And so fleet size is broken up by light duty vehicles, medium duty vehicles, heavy duty vehicles, off-road vehicles. So this will, if this works out five years, six years down the road, we could be strictly having a contract possibly for just heavy duty diesel vehicles and not have any cars or light trucks in that program, in our fleet program.
When is that contract renewed?
We will be bidding it out next year. Or, I'm sorry, two years. We just renewed it for two years. So ne- this year and then next year we'll be bidding it out.
And for clarification, they're referring to the vehicle?
First Vehicle Services Fleet contract.
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
But you have enough historical data to compare the two. After, after you've been into one of these programs long enough to go back and compare purchase, maintenance bias, to, and then what the ultimate cost of that vehi- uh, that vehicle is. So that, that will be a ongoing process, correct?
Absolutely. He's already done some of that.
Yeah, I did all that work. But the biggest bang in the money like Mr. Gar- excuse me, Mr. Garza mentioned is that you're not forking out three hundred and forty thousand dollars on these twelve vehicles. He is paying less than sixty-eight thousand dollars for the first year turnkey. So by the time of this five-year lease, you end up, they have a fee established with depreciation and all that. You end up paying about ten, eleven thousand dollars over a five-year period. That's great. I'd be happy to use anybody's money. I'll pay them back ten thousand over a five-year period time, three hundred thousand dollars. So that, that's a big win-win situation. It, it's a mechanism, a financial tool where it helps minimize the financial impact on, on, on an entity where they can use that cash flow somewhere else. Fire department, we'll be, we're going to look at that a couple of years too as well, because that's another big bang. So this is where slowly a lot of cities are moving towards.
Yeah, and I could tell you that small, small to medium-sized cities are shifting to doing these types of lease programs, um, with different rental companies or other companies.
We talked to several cities. Uh, City of Fredericksburg, uh, does it as well.
Commerce Texas does it. That city manager called me three times about it when I was in Kingsville.
And how long had they been in this program? They had just started?
The other communities?
Uh-huh.
Um, it's probably been a thing maybe just in the last five years.
Yeah, I believe.
That cities have transitioned to it.
Okay.
Um, also keep in mind too that part, you know, if you put, if you, if you look at it from the car rental company perspective, um, think about the impact that, you know, Uber and all these other new, newer kind of transportation mechanisms are having on car rental companies. So they're kind of forced to also change the way that their business models work. And so it used to just be corporate, yeah, I think. And so now they're del- delving into more cities and they're trying to expand how they can kind of stay relevant and stay in business and stuff. So it's, all this has really only been going on in the last five years or so.
That's correct. One unique thing about enterprise to have a clinch, niche in the Texas market, because as you want to know, I'm, I'm getting legal on you. But, you know, usually on, on lease, they require a certain number of years to be involved as a contract, long-term, short-term. Here, you just say the fir- first two, three years you want out of it. They have a clause in there to let you get out and you just pay the remaining, uh, cost on that vehicle if you would have bought it outright, basically. So you can walk away from it technically. That's no difference.
The maintenance cost will be a huge saving.
Right.
Yes.
Because other than, it's really kind of just evening out our cash flow, uh, so that we're not having big bumps of one-time occurrences. We're just evening it out and paying it over time.
That's the other way to look at it.
I think that's what you'd kind of said a couple of minutes ago, that basically you're spending the same amount of money.
Eventually over five years.
But I guess you're getting in potential for newer vehicles or?
Yes, ma'am. You're absolutely right. But the trick here is like, Darryl was mentioning is that, you know, we're going to have an individual over this, be managing with the enterprise fund. It's where you want to capitalize on the market value of these rental cars. As you well know, this coming year, market values of used cars are prime targets right now versus new cars. The price values, at that time, you want to just go in there and maybe flip a year or two years down the road where you capitalize on that value. Turn that money back into the no-lease program. And just a correction, we don't split the profits. We, it's our profits. They just get that base salvage property and that's all theirs. So it's, it, it's a win-win situation if it's managed correctly. Again, I don't know if you mentioned this, but if we wreck it, we damage it, it's, we just bought it, so.
But it's a win-win.
Pay.
You're, you're, you're winning by not having to spend the cash upfront, but we're also winning by possibly being able to reduce our, substantially reduce our maintenance contract with First Vehicle Services.
Yes. Thank you. I think I understand it a little better. I appreciate it.
Yeah, unless anybody has, has any other questions or issues or anything?
Anyone have anything else?
Just as a reminder, I'll continue the conversation on July second, talking about staffing and some other reorgs and stuff. So expect to hear more about budget at that meeting.
And, and if I can say, for the benefit of the media, we have a regular, a, a special meeting currently scheduled for tomorrow night, but we will be canceling that tomorrow. We do not anticipate having a meeting tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, anything else, then we're done.